Thank you Chair McGay, members of the board. Here to present our Coconino County wildfire slash emergency season forecast and our state of readiness here today to present is Tim Carter, our interim emergency manager in our emergency management office. Dare I say, when we have our emergency management groups get together, it's always great to meet with and discuss with our partners. Sometimes it's like old home where we all just got have gotten to know each other so well intimately, the best and the worst. But yet here we are today, planning the best people, in my opinion, planning for difficult times. And that's what this represents. So, thank you and thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Andy. Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. Good to see you guys again. Thanks for having us. Again, my name's Tim Carter and I'm proud to serve as your interim director for county emergency management. You know, I want to say, thanks for taking the opportunity to spend some time together, but you know, it's it's for a very real hazard that we face here in the county, you know, with our wildfire season coming up. And unfortunately, what we know is that wildfire is no longer a season, you know, it is year round. So, our preparations with our partnerships that we have have really reflected that year round. So, I want to bring up a few folks with us to kind of go through what our season or what the winter has or hasn't been. What what we can expect weather wise. We've got partnerships from the National Weather Service, Brian Klemowski and Megan are here for some outlooks for that. We've also got APS who have been great partners for us to talk about their statewide fire mitigation plan. The sheriff's department is here to talk about evacuation considerations, things that information that they need and how we communicate that information out there in times of evacuation. And then I will come back up and finish up with the county's overall state of readiness from the emergency management department and working with our internal and external stakeholders. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Madam Chair, I'll leave it up to you guys if we want to do Q and A. If you guys have questions for anyone, you know, this is kind of an informal discussion as well, pipe in as needed or at the end of every session, whatever you guys would like to do, we're flexible with that. So you can see some of the presenters we have today. Again, you're going to hear me use the word "we" a lot. This is not something that emergency management, we can do out of our six-person shop. You know, we've got a lot of land, a lot of partnerships. We rely heavily on the relationships we have across the federal, state, and local jurisdictions, as well as a lot of our private partners, our nonprofits. This is truly a whole community effort for wildfire preparedness. So after you hear from all of us, the kind of the last thing that that we'll leave on is more of a focus for the community, kind of our call to action for the community, some steps that that we can take on an individual level to ensure that we're all prepared for really any hazard, but particularly for wildfire season coming up. So with that, I want to turn it over to Brian and Megan from National Weather Service.
All right. Thank you very much, Tim. Really appreciate it. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate the relationship that we've had with Coconino County over the years. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Brian Klemowski, meteorologist in charge of the National Weather Service in Flagstaff, Arizona. I've served in this capacity for about 20 years and consider it an honor to be here and working with all these great people here. Now, I've enjoyed this warm weather that we've all had. It's 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 it's, you know, wonderful to be outside, but it serves as a reminder and as a sober as a sober reminder of the dry winter that we've had. As Megan will soon fill in all the details, it's been one of the driest winters we've had. And we have good reason, we have very good reason to be concerned about our upcoming fire season. As we always have, the National Weather Service will be working with you. We enjoy the relationship we have with Coconino County. We're going to be there for you. Look forward to working with you in preparation and during any events that come around. Let me just take this moment to introduce Megan. She's our warning coordination meteorologist at the National Weather Service in Flagstaff, Arizona. You're probably going to be seeing more and more of her in this capacity. So Megan?
Thank you, Brian. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Thank you again. My name's Megan Taylor. I'm the warning coordination meteorologist with the National Weather Service here in Flagstaff. And I will be spending the next few minutes here giving you an update, showing you some data and graphics to support what we're saying about this dry winter season that we've had and what we can expect during the spring. So this is an overview of what I'll be discussing this afternoon. Again, I'll have graphics to support each of these points, but just to highlight here what we'll go over. The current drought status in northern Arizona, we've had a below average monsoon season, if you think all the way back to last summer. Combined with this historically dry winter season that we've had, this has resulted in worsening drought conditions across all of northern Arizona compared to this time last year. We have had a historic dry start to the winter season. I'm sure everybody's well aware. We've had only 11.2 inches of snowfall in Flagstaff. We usually have over 60 inches of snowfall at this point. So we usually see a snowpack of over five feet and we've had less than one foot of snowfall this year. Much of the high country is near or at an all-time low when it comes to looking at our snowpack for this time of the year. What we expect through the rest of the season into the spring is for a continuation of the dry and warmer-than-average conditions. What does that mean for fire potential outlook? Right now, our fuels are drier than normal for February, which is bringing a current risk of wildfire. And this is unusual during the winter season. By the months of April and May, there is an above-normal potential for significant wildland fire across much of eastern Arizona, central Arizona, including the Mogollon Rim and the White Mountains region. If these dry conditions persist into the spring, there is potential for an extended and significant wildfire season. Getting into some of the graphics and kind of display the story that we're we're trying to tell here. On the left is the current drought monitor as of just a few days ago. And on the right-hand side is a comparison to last year at this time. So clearly, worsening drought conditions. Much of Coconino County is experiencing severe to extreme drought conditions. That's indicated by the orange and the red colors. And even just in the last four weeks, drought conditions have worsened by one or even two categories. This is a look at precipitation over the last 90 days. It's kind of a longer-term look into the percent of normal precipitation. So the red colors here indicating that most all of northern Arizona is between 25% to 50% of normal precipitation. And then taking a little bit shorter look, so we know we did have one storm system basically in the last three months, just a couple of weeks ago. And that did bring some relief to portions of primarily Grand Canyon region and the Kaibab Plateau, where where in the last 30 days, they're seeing anywhere from 70% to 90% of normal precipitation. Again, this is just that short-term 30-day period. But the rest of Coconino County is still in that 25% to 50% of normal precipitation. So let's take a look at snowpack. And for that, we we look at these sites called snow tells. And one thing that we particularly look at when we're trying to assess snowpack is the liquid equivalent. So we call that snow water equivalent. So how much water is existing in the snowpack? And that's what we're looking at here. And of the existing sites along the Mogollon Rim, many sites are at or below an inch. And snow water equivalent is below 50% of average across the Mogollon Rim. Now, the numbers here, you can, I don't know how well you can see that, but the numbers indicate the actual percentage for each of those sites. And so you can see all of the sites in red, anywhere from nothing, no existing snowpack to about 30% of normal. Even in the San Francisco Peaks, we have one site up in the inter basin and that's at roughly 50% of normal. This this graphic shows the ranking. So when we look at that snow water equivalent, which tells us how much water is in the snowpack, this tells us the rank of where that is in a historical context. So many of these sites are in the top 15 lowest snowpack on record. And most of the records are roughly about 40 years. It is the lowest snowpack on record for White Horse Lake, which is west of Williams, and Heber. So moving on to the weather portion, more of an outlook. This is the outlook from our climate prediction center for the month of March. And so on the left is the precipitation outlook, on the right is the temperature outlook. And as we can see by sort of the brown colors and the orange colors on the right, the outlook for March shows increased odds for below-normal precipitation and warmer-than-average temperatures, especially across the eastern portion of Arizona for the warmer-than-average temperatures. This is the spring outlook. So this includes the months of April, May, and June, so right in the heart of our fire season. And there's not much change here. In fact, even better odds for continued dry conditions and warmer-than-average temperatures. So kind of putting all these pieces together, this leads to, well, what is the drought going to look like? And this is the drought outlook. So essentially, a drought forecast. And as you can see in the brown colors here, we are expecting drought to persist across all of northern Arizona through the spring months, through May. And now what is this going to mean for fire potential? This is our wildland fire agency's significant wildland fire potential outlook. And this is for starting in March. So we'll go through each of the months. This is the outlook for March. And for northern Arizona, we see pretty normal conditions. We don't see above normal until we get into the southeastern portion of the state. And again, this is for March. This is the April outlook. And as you can see by the red colors creeping into eastern and central portions of the state, we are starting to see areas of above-normal wildland fire potential, including areas like the White Mountains. And then once we get into May, you see those red areas shift even further west and northward. So much of northern Arizona expected to see above-normal potential for wildland fires. And I will end here. I won't repeat the summary here, but but just to very quickly summarize, drought conditionings are worsening across northern Arizona with Coconino County seeing anywhere from severe to extreme drought conditions. It is a historical dry start to the winter season, the fourth driest on record, and our records go back over 100 years. In addition to that, much of the high country seeing near or all-time low snowpack. And the outlook for the spring is for below below-normal precipitation and warmer-than-average temperatures. So our our message here is that if the dry conditions persist into the spring, there is potential for an extended and significant wildfire season. I will leave it there. I'm not sure if we'd like to do questions now or hold.
Go ahead Supervisor Horstman.
Do you have any good news?
Check the forecast next week. There's weather in the forecast next week.
That is actually very good news. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Megan. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, private partnerships are equally as important to our success. And Jen is reminding me, I will take very quickly, we did have some last-minute changes for the most up-to-date weather info from Weather Service. So what you have in your agenda books is slightly dated, but we did email out the current presentation to you guys this morning in case you, so you'll have it at least in your inbox. Okay. So again, our private partnerships are equally as important. We've had the opportunity to work closely with APS on a lot of their fire mitigation discussions that they're going to talk about shortly, but want to thank them for for coming. And I'm not sure who's going to, Janet or you in? We're going to start it. So introduce Ms. Janet Dean from APS.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman McGay, Supervisors. It's wonderful to be here with you. I wish it was a session with more good news, Supervisor Horstman, as you asked about. First, I just want to say how much we appreciate being partners with the county and with your wonderful emergency management team. We recognize that the work we do, the electricity we provide, comes with a risk, an inherent risk, and we're very focused on that. And we can't do our work to mitigate and prepare without partners such as the county. So today, what we want to do is give you an overview of our fire mitigation program, all the different components. For some of you, it's a reminder. For some of you, it might be new information. But then we really want to focus in on one new tool in our toolbox, public safety power shut offs, because that is a way for us, when the conditions are extreme, to keep our community safe. And then we'll talk a little bit about how we plan to communicate out to residents in Coconino County who are impacted and not impacted by that program, but we want to make sure that the information is out there. So with that today, I have a couple of folks with me. I have Wade Ward, who will present. He's our fire mitigation manager. We also have our Northeast Division Manager, Joe Weathersby, in the audience, and he's available for any questions you might have that fall into his area. So with that, I will turn it over to Wade Ward.
Thanks, Janet. Chairwoman McGay and Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. I don't know where to put anything and make everything fall down. You hear me all right? Again, thanks for the opportunity. We are extremely good partners with all of our counties, in particular, Coconino. So we're happy here to present today and share with you. And hopefully, you have some questions and hopefully I can answer them. And if I don't, I'll make Joe answer them. I've got a clicker here. So what you're looking at here is just an overview of our comprehensive fire mitigation plan. It's really important to understand that this plan has been in development for the last 10 years. And even before that, before I came to APS 10 years ago, there's a lot of things that we have done. But at some point along that way, in about 2014, we had identified that, yes, we have a lot of proactive measures, particularly our vegetation maintenance program that does a lot for wildfire mitigation, but it's not a program. And we made it clear that from our executives that we will have a program in place to address as many of those issues as we possibly can. And more importantly, to look forward and to develop some best management practices that we've either learned from other utilities or other fire organizations to make sure that we reduce the risk as much as possible. As Janet said, the generation, transmission, and distribution of electricity is inherently dangerous. But I think we'd all agree that the system that we do have is incredibly safe. The ability to walk under a power line and to use the electricity that we do in our homes is very safe and efficient. But we have to take further steps, given the conditions that we have. So it's not just about short-term or even long-term drought. It's really about the community that we live in, and we live in a fire-dependent ecosystem. And because we've all chosen chosen to, including myself, to live in these fire-dependent ecosystems, we have to find a way to live with fire and to reduce the potential for catastrophic wildfire. So our comprehensive wildfire mitigation plan does that for the company and for the customers that we serve. So we look at several pillars. One is vegetation management, grid hardening, asset inspection, monitoring and awareness, and then our operational mitigation measures that are put in place. So I'll try to touch on as many of those as I possibly can. Somebody keep me honest with my time, because I can talk about this for a long time and I don't want to take up anybody else's time. So certainly, as I touched on, our comprehensive fire mitigation plan, wildfire mitigation plan, really the basis of all of that is our vegetation maintenance in and around our rightaways. This also allows us to do vegetation maintenance, particularly hazard trees outside of our rightaway, which is a real a real unique opportunity that we have in here in Arizona with our federally managed lands like Forest Service. So typically, if you were in another state like California, I hate to pick on them, but it's easy. Is that, you know, it's not as easy to get those trees removed outside of the rightaway that the utility has. We have that ability to do that because of the relationships that we've built over the years. We don't take that lightly, and I'm sorry they're not here to give them the kudos they deserve. But the opportunity for us to work together with them and remove trees that are outside of the rightaway that have a potential to fall in and hit our wire is huge. And that also goes to the county as well, across the state, all of our counties. So that certainly is a big piece of it. Our grid hardening, we understand and realize that our system is, in some cases, very old. We've been around since the 1800 mining days, and some of that wire is still out there. Good news, bad news. Great, it lasted a long time and we can create that, but who knows how long it's going to last. So we're constantly, and I'm oversimplifying it with wire, I'm talking about poles and equipment that's on it and everything else that Joe and his crew manages. But certainly that piece of it, and adding expulsion-limiting fuses, so that if you have a fuse, when your lights blink, that system's trying to heal itself and take that fault away. What we're saying is, in the worst elevated fire conditions that we have, we turn off that ability to do that. And yes, it makes the outage longer, but it also increases and reduces risk. Should reduced risk increases the reliability, we have to go back and patrol that entire line before we re-energize it. So we feel like that is the most responsible thing to do in elevated fire conditions. Some of the other things that we do is the pole mesh, the fire wrap that goes around the poles. Some folks have been recognizing that lately and calling to us and asking, what the heck is this weird stuff on the poles? It looks like fiberglass or chicken wire that's covered with tar. It's not actually. Simply, it's a it's a proprietary chemical that is on the fire, on the mesh, wire mesh that we wrap the pole with. And the easiest way that I can explain it is, it's much like those little black cats that you used to light when you were a kid on 4th of July and they'd swell up and look like a snake. That's exactly what it does. When less than 200 degrees of temperature hits that pole from an oncoming fire, it swells up, excludes oxygen, and therefore keeps the pole from not burning. This allows us to keep the pole up in the air, the wire up in the air. It gets emergency services in faster and safer, and it gets the community out. So as we replace poles and rebuild, we're adding that fire mesh in a lot of places. Question?
Yeah. I didn't know that. Now, thank you for telling me what that is. Now, I really want to see it, but I'm not going to. My question is, what percentage of the poles have you been able to put this mesh on?
So we have a little over 80,000 equipment poles across the state. Those are poles that have a transformer, fuse, or a switch, or many other things on it. And we are replacing those as those poles, lack of better words, die out. So when we replace those poles, or they get hit or fall down, we're replacing those. The rest of them are on a maintenance program where, as Joe and his folks identify those poles, then we're replacing those poles and adding mesh to them. There is not, right now, a programmatic aspect to it where we're just saying a certain percentage is being replaced every year. We've really just gone through the testing phase with this. If it does work, we can validate and verify that. And we're working towards a replacement program that would be like percentage-based.
What the percentage is in Coconino?
If that's important to you, I can get it to you.
It is. Curious, more than anything, and I appreciate your-
And the county and Flagstaff will break it down that way.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah. I know a lot of the poles, Joe, that you replaced during tunnel and pipeline, all of those were wrapped at that time. So out Fish Saw Mill and that whole area, all those are wrapped now. Okay. Enhanced inspections, again, one of the biggest programs that we have is doing a pre-elevated fire condition. So our comprehensive fire mitigation plan requires us to do a preparedness level by district. We have 13 service territory districts across the state. Each one of those gets evaluated every week, 365 days of the year, with about 12 to 15 different indices that tell us what the conditions are in those particular districts. We activate some of our operational controls based on those conditions and make sure that we're staying ahead of the curve in terms of, you know, the most extreme conditions. So again, those inspections are done prior to what we call our P3. So we are in preparedness level one through five, much like the Forest Service and other municipalities, including the county. That gives you an idea of what the conditions are like. And then we we put those things into place. The patrols, monitoring and awareness. APS has invested a significant amount of resources in this space. When we considered non-reclosed strategy by district and when we looked at PSPS, Public Safety Power Shut Off, we knew that we had to make data-driven decisions. We already talked about this already this morning or this afternoon. And what we found out is, we had one Ross weather station within one mile of one of our circuits that was on potentially on PSPS. We knew that wasn't a very good database for data-based decision-making, so we've invested heavily in that. By May 1st of this year, we'll have over 100 weather stations that are sitting right on our poles across the state. And on top of that, we'll have about approximately 100 PTZ pan tilt zoom cameras that give us situational awareness as to what's going on, not only from weather, but also from oncoming fire. This allows us to not necessarily, we only have four fire mitigation specialists, instead of running somebody across the state two hours to go look at something, we can monitor it on the cameras. We also have 13 currently AI cameras. So these are artificial intelligent cameras that pick up smoke. We know that early detection leads to early suppression. And so the focus is on putting these cameras at, as opposed to our PTZ cameras that are sitting right on our wire and our poles. These AI cameras are sitting up high, looking at top-level smoke and a view shed that is miles around. We have one up here on Eldon, we have one down by Mun's Park. We have several of them going in this year as well. So 15 additional cameras that'll go on this year. Those have already played an active role in detecting fires. We have multiple fires, including some of them in the Prescott, excuse me, Prescott, Flagstaff, and Payson area that have detected those fires early on and have given notification to the dispatch center. So everybody on Coconino County, Flagstaff Dispatch for US Forest Service, Flagstaff Fire, all has access to that. That is a partnership from us at APS to our federal, state, and local authorities to partner in this effort to get early detection and early suppression on these fires. They have full access to these cameras. It does not cost them anything. I tell them in the onboarding process that you're not going to get a bill after a year that says you viewed it 1,000 times. This is a partnership from APS to our stakeholders to better detect these fires early on. Our red flag warnings, again, are based on recommendations from National Weather Service, as well as the three meteorologists that we have on staff at APS. We're constantly looking at those, evaluating them, working with our fire mitigation specialists to make sure that we're making the best decisions that we possibly can. We have made it even more granular, whereas the National Weather Service zone areas are quite large for our operational districts, that sometimes we break up their zones even more granular in order to make sure that we're making the right decision about the type of work that goes on every day at APS. And then at times, limiting to that only to emergent and pre-emergent work. That's certainly helped us in that space. Any questions before I go on here?
I do have one. This this camera technology is really impressive. You said that you have one at Mount Eldon, a camera on Mount Eldon, and that you have one located in Mun's Park, correct? How far west will the one located on Mount Eldon pick anything up? How far west will the one located on Mount Eldon pick anything up?
So I can tell you what the company will tell us, and I'll tell you what we've experienced, and we've experienced even better than what the company tells us. We've picked up fires from a single camera over twenty-five miles away. We have the capability to then move that camera and look wherever we want and zoom to thirty X. So I can tell you, we can see somebody skiing on the top of the peaks if we wanted to. It's pretty detailed. So they overlap in view sheds as well, in some cases, not in all. But in some cases, the view sheds might be, you know, a couple miles apart, and sometimes they're overlapped. And when we can get two cameras to pick up the same fire, then they triangulate that and give us a lat and long. And in this case, with the Forest Service a few weeks ago, maybe three or four weeks ago now, we were able to give them a lat and long for that fire so that they don't have to spend time going to figure out where it is or to look at some of their other cameras. We were able to give them the lat and long, and it was off by thirty feet.
So twenty-five miles west, that's not quite Williams, right?
Yeah, we have another one going up in Williams this before May first.
You do? Okay, okay, that's great. And then the one in Mun's Park, that would pick up the same radius, twenty-five miles.
Yep, and then we have one in Sedona as well at the airport. So we've got pretty good coverage for Flagstaff.
Yeah, I would say very good coverage. Okay, thank you.
Here's an example of it. This is the one up on Eldon. The biggest landmark you can pick out is the dome there in the picture. But that little, I call it a carrot. It's the little V with the, it's like two carrots pointing right at the origin of the fire. So in this case, it was picking it up in early detection. In most cases, we're finding that, you know, there's a lag because Pano AI has a human behind this that also validates to make sure that we don't just pick up somebody burning a pile of leaves or something like that. We truly want to make sure that it's something that's validated. So they validate it first. By the time the camera picks it up, they validate it, and the text message comes to us and/or email. It's about a minute, minute and a half. They try to keep it under three minutes. And in most cases, we have, the cameras beaten the dispatch center by anywhere between five to seven minutes. So as they get integrated with it more and get used to using it, I think it will cut down that response time even more. So to give you an idea, and this one is a little old in terms of the amount, but you can see the PTZ cameras that we have on the left, and then the weather stations on the right. Of course, our service territory goes all the way down to Douglas and down to Yuma. Most of what you're going to see in 2025 is kind of filling in our service territory to the south. We feel like we've got a pretty good handle on the north and the central part of the state. But we'll continue to fill in those gaps. As far as PSPS is concerned, Janet talked about it at the beginning. And I know we've talked to city council here, and we've talked to a lot of folks. We don't take this lightly. I think you can tell from our decision-making process over a year and a half ago when we started to consider PSPS as a tool in our toolbox. We understood that it's not something that we want to do. We recognize that any outage or disruption of power to anybody, including myself, I don't like to have the power go off. We do understand that's an inconvenience. But we also understand that there are conditions that we are presented with in our environment that the potential for extreme conditions, particularly wind and low RHs, relative humidity, that it makes sense to have this tool in our toolbox. We know it's inconvenient for everybody. It's just like shutting down I-40 or closing schools or whatever else it might be. There are risks with it, and there are inconveniences. But the trade-off of the potential for catastrophic wildfire is not something that I personally or APS is willing to sacrifice for a public safety power shut-off if necessary. We've gone to great lengths to communicate with you all, with the community, with individuals, with organizations, to make sure that we're doing it right and that we're making sure that everybody understands why we're doing it, and also to give folks early notification as to when we're going to do it. Does that mean that we're always going to have four days as you look at this? Maybe not. I don't know if National Weather Service or Army Meteorologists can predict everything all the time. There might be something that comes up sooner than four days, or more sudden, I should say. We're not going to take the risk of not doing it just because we don't have four days. But hopefully, we can forecast that, look out into the future, and better understand what the wind and overall relative humidity and temperatures are going to be like to be able to do this. So I'll stop there on PSPS or anything else. Does anybody have any questions?
First of all, thank you, and I really appreciate APS. We had some community meetings there out in Fort Valley in particular to talk about PSPS and what that means and to really answer questions. And you were great. I really appreciate APS being there, working with the community and getting the word out. And I would, it looks like we'll be doing similar types of community outreach meetings, and I will invite you all and hope you'll be able to join us because I think it's important for the community to know when, how, what, and what the criteria is. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, thank you for the presentation, helping us understand more of your process and whatnot. In light of the previous presentation about the weather, you know, just so important that we're on top of this to prevent any unfortunate incidents and whatnot. And so thank you for sharing about how the poles, like Supervisor Horseman mentioned, was pretty interesting. And now I'm going to be looking out for them when I'm out in the woods. But I really think that, you know, we need to continue this collaboration to make sure we're as safe as possible moving forward fire season. Thank you.
All right. Sounds like a plan. Yeah, we can do that, for sure. There's a couple other things incorporated with the mesh. We do the defensible space around poles, the hazard trees that I talked about, as well as our vegetation maintenance. So we're doing everything that we possibly can to reduce that risk. And I appreciate you guys being a partner. I mean, other than Tim, but that was one of our greatest, so appreciate it very, very much.
So if you can bear with me for a few more minutes, I do want to go through some of our plans for communication. But I know that probably a big question on your minds is, what areas? Last year, when we started this program, we started, we started small. We had thirteen feeders across northern Arizona that were impacted. This year, we have, based on the risk analysis, all the data collection that Wade and his team have been doing, we have expanded the program to sixty-five feeders across northern Arizona, and there are several more within Coconino County. So last year, it was more out Lake Mary, the Mormon Lake area. It was beyond Flagstaff, out 180. So the Baderville, Fort Valley areas were impacted. But this year, we're going to see an impact across a much greater section of the county. So there will be some impact within the city of Flagstaff itself. We are trying to be as surgical and as precise as we can so that we turn power off where we have safety concerns, and we try to limit who's impacted based on those safety concerns. But the way our lines run, sometimes there will be impacts for customers who may not be right in the area of concern, but it's just the way the lines go. But there will be some impacts within the city of Flagstaff. Primarily, we're very concerned about the Mars Hill and Mount Eldon areas, which, you know, make a lot of sense. Again, out 180, Hidden Hollow, Fort Valley, Baderville areas. We will be into Donnie Park, Timberline, Fernwood, those neighborhoods, Cosnino, Winona, Kachina Village and Mountain Air parks. Some impacts in Williams, Red Lakes area, Mormon Lake again, Forest Lakes again. We will be impacting Grand Canyon National Park and the town of Tuscany. And we have met with them, and they're very much involved in their preparation planning. And then where Coconino County meets Yavapai County over in the Ash Fork area, there will be some impacts there, there as well as in the Blue Ridge. So we are, it is a much broader sweep this year. But as you said, Supervisor Horseman, we were at your community meeting last year, and we will be at any of your community meetings. Let us know. We will have somebody there to walk through with our customers. But with that, I'll just give you a quick overview of some of our communication outreach.
I have a question to ask on that. Can we get, I know we got some maps before, and those are very, very helpful. Be great if we could get some maps on that.
And I neglected to say, yes, we will have maps for you, but because we're trying to be as precise and targeted as we can, our teams are still honing in on those and developing those maps. So as soon as they're ready, which I expect later this week, early next week, I will start getting those to Tim for distribution. The other thing that you won't see on the slides, but is a change this year, is we have added a more interactive map onto our website. Well, we will be adding. It'll launch sometime in the next week is what I'm anticipating. But it'll start at a big, high-level view. It will show shaded areas where we expect PSPS impacts to be. And then you could, a customer or resident can zoom in and see some specific properties. And there's even, with an address search, it'll pull up a point, and you can see if you're impacted. It will say yes if you're impacted. It's not going to return anything if an address is not impacted because with 1.3 million customers, it would have, if we had to do every no, it would have bogged down the system, and people would have been sitting waiting for responses. So we're inputting the yes addresses, if that makes sense. But just very quickly, we're going to have a very robust education plan, community outreach for our customers. There will be mailings. Our initial messages will be to make sure our customers know how seriously we take our work in the wildfire mitigation space. We are going to push personal preparedness as much as we can in conjunction with our county emergency management partners. We are going to be encouraging all customers to sign up, both for our alert system, but also to get into their county alert systems. So our messaging and our materials will actually have the websites to sign up for county alerts. So there will be mailings to all of our customers across northern, across the state who live in and on a line that we consider a wildfire mitigation line, where we think there's high risk of wildfire. And that's what, Wade, about two hundred and sixty-five, two hundred and seventy lines total? Two forty-eight, so I was elevating a little bit. About two hundred and forty-eight lines. All the customers on those lines will get general wildfire mitigation information. But then for those sixty-five lines where customers are impacted and living in a PSPS area, they will get a very targeted, specific PSPS message that explains the program, explains it's a tool we expect to use in a very limited capacity. And as a reminder, before we launched the program last year, Wade's team took a historic look back over five years. And in five years, they found four instances where conditions might have needed a PSPS to be called. We all know what we're facing this year. This is a much different year than we saw the last five years. And then PSPS is, it's one tool, and it's the tool that we will use when everything else we've done. We just don't think that's enough based on the indices that Wade and his team are analyzing. So. So. So that's a quick look. Again, we will be working very closely with Tim and his team. Our PIO team will be connected with Melissa and your county team, and we will be doing messaging, we hope, in conjunction. And like I said, any event that you're aware of, any newsletters that you have, anything we can do to work with you as you're working with your constituents, we're here for you. So with that, oh, this-
One other, sorry.
That's okay.
This is obviously something near and dear to all of us. And so we really appreciate everybody being here and working with us because it truly takes all of us to try to do what we can to make our communities safe. So we really, really appreciate this. You know, one of the things we talked about this morning was a wildfire defense grant, which we want to use to look into community outreach, community education. And so I'm bringing this up now, and also to put it on the radar for our county manager and our deputy county managers and our flood control district director, that obviously APS, as we move forward, needs to be a part of this programming. So, yes, thank you.
Absolutely. So just a little bit more in your packet. It just lines out some of the various communication efforts. This is an example of the flyer that we sent last year specifically to our customers impacted by PSPS. This has just been updated and is going to be going out in mid-March to customers. And then this is, you know, our PIOs will work together, and we will each elevate each other's messaging and do whatever we can to make sure our communities are prepared and safe. So with that, any other questions for APS? Well, again, thank you so much, Chairman Bagay.
Thank you for the presentation. And just doing a collaborative communication and, you know, education is very important to our communities, you know, because we all serve the same people. And, you know, we try to make things a lot better for them out there too. So I just want to thank the presenters at this time. Tim, thank you for leading, and all the others that are here to possibly share some information with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I kind of want to sit over and say you've gone easy on the last two groups, and I hope that continues now that I'm coming up. But just, I would never, we've been at it for roughly about an hour just for a time check for everybody. Do you guys, do we need to pause for a break, or do you want to keep going, Chair?
We'll keep going, we'll take a break shortly.
Just let me know. So we've kind of heard, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the not-so-pleasant news about the forecast and kind of the situation that we collectively, as northern Arizona, are in. So now I kind of want to take a look at what we are planning to do about it. You know, some of the preparation that we've made, some of the policies and procedures that we have in place, the relationships that we enjoy here in northern Arizona that we're utilizing as we make plans moving into the fire season. So a lot of what we do comes from the National Preparedness Framework. It identifies five specific mission areas for emergency management. And, you know, those are prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. You know, we've kind of all seen those before. So today, I really want to focus on that preparedness, mitigation, and response. So as we go through, really, our stuff really starts, the planning is in the documentation that we have. We kind of have roadmaps in our emergency operations plan, which is that image there on the top left. It's available online on the county website for public viewing. Really, it's a great roles and responsibilities document that we use to kind of guide us through any disaster or incident we may face. Typically, now in emergency management, we focus on all hazards. We no longer have a wildfire plan, a flood plan, or anything like that. These are all hazards documents that are applicable across the board, regardless of the incident we may be facing. To support that emergency operations plan, we have our Coconino County Emergency Management Department Operations and Procedures Manual, which is on the top left. It's not published, but if you guys would like to see a copy, that really dives down more towards the checklist level. We took the idea when we created these documents of, well, you guys remember Wes used to always say, if we always, we all get hit by a train, I like to hope we'd all win the lottery and don't come in, that the next generation can pick these documents up and move forward. So they're very clear roles and responsibilities, guidance documents for anybody that may come in and assist the county. And then the screenshot right below that is our evacuation map. A lot of times, we will focus after any incident, any disaster, any training or exercise, we sit down and do an after-action review of our performance. We look at what went well, and then we look at what areas that we can improve and where we can grow. You know, did we identify any gaps, or how can we do- You know, did we identify any gaps or how can we do better? And evacuation map is a direct result of conversations we had following the 2022 tunnel fire. Typically when we would send out emergency notifications on behalf of the sheriff's office, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. But typically when we would send those out, it could be, you know, a few minutes to, to get that out. We would have to get coordinates of this cross street, that cross street. And we learned in tunnel fire that that didn't work. We can do better. So one of the things that we did, we sat down collaboratively with sheriff's office leadership and county IT, the GIS team. Specifically looked at where are our population centers, you know, where are our big neighborhoods? How can we create zones to make it, you know, pre-identified, make it a little bit easier for us to communicate with those residents? Some factors that we took into account there were how many points of ingress egress do we have for evacuations? What's the population count for those areas? And so I like to use Muntz Park as a good example. Muntz Park is divided up into three different zones. We use major arterial roads, I-17 for north, south, and then Pinewood Boulevard is, you know, the east, west there. So we've got three different zones, which also helps with reentry. Instead of having all of Muntz Park come back in, you know, we may have five, 6,000 people down there on the Fourth of July weekend. If we try to get them back in at the same time, it's going to create some, some challenges logistically for law enforcement and traffic congestion. So it allows us to kind of throttle that reentry piece coming back in. So it now allows us, when we send out a message, it's more clear, more concise. We're no longer referencing, you know, obscure Forest Service roads. We're able to say Muntz Park 18 is in go status. So that's a new tool that we've rolled out over the last couple of years that we've had a lot of success.
And by the way, I think it is, but I think it's also something we need to get out to the public more. I know there was, there was a work last year on getting it out. Some of us put it in our newsletters, but fire season is here. And we do need to get that out to the public. Maybe something to add to our county newsletter, for example, to get out to the public.
Stay tuned.
You've read ahead. But Supervisor, you're, you're exactly right. That is our, that is our point moving forward. That's one of our goals is to, is really to beef up our community outreach and our citizen engagement.
Supervisor Fowler?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You may proceed.
Supervisor Fowler, if you're muted, if you want to unmute.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Tim, with your presentation on the, your mapping, are you able to send out smoke alarms to the impact areas as well with that?
I will say in true emergency management fashion, it depends. That is something we are looking at. One of the, the different ways that we are potentially looking to expand the use of the emergency notification system are for, you know, National Weather Service. Excessively, you know, red flag warnings, things like that. Through various limitations we have with cellular devices and, and working with cell phone carriers. We may not be able to send those out through text messages, but we definitely can send those out by email. So that is definitely something we'll, we'll take a look at and see where we can run the ground and get back with you on that for sure.
Thank you.
So also in the preparedness realm, another big focus for us is training and exercise. We are continuously holding training across the region and really across the state for a lot of our first responder partners, a lot of our emergency management partners. To really bring in that coordination, that communication. Typically when any incident, when we are done, when we start doing those after action reviews, when you ask what went wrong, what failed first, where can we improve first? The first thing to come up is almost always communication. So that's, you know, for us, one of the big things that we look at are relationships. So getting everybody together in a room during training and exercise allows us that networking as well as education. So I don't necessarily need to call APS. I can call Joe. I can call Wade. I can call Chance, right? It, it's a lot more of a personal level relationship, which really helps us be more effective and efficient with our response. So you'll see there on the screen, some of our training and exercise that we've done recently. This past Friday, we hosted a policy group training here in Flagstaff. We invited essentially our county leadership and board of supervisors, and then all of our municipal counterparts to come together to really understand what the roles of that senior leadership policy group would be. You know, what do we as the emergency management department need from our elected officials in terms of strategic guidance and vision? From, you know, from your standpoint, what do you want to see as a final in-state for a disaster? So really taking a deep dive to understand how beneficial your leadership is as a board. And how that really impacts how we can carry out the missions that you guys see. Also, we do a lot of emergency operations center training. And I will go ahead and pause now and say up there you see E O C. As with all things, we like to talk in acronyms sometimes. So if I throw out an acronym and, and there's a question of what that is, my apologies, let me know. So for training for the emergency operations center, we are having our third annual joint information center exercise. And the joint information center is a fancy term for all of our public information staff. All of our communication teams from around the region come together. We are going to give them a scenario and have them work through the scenario to make sure that they are ready. So the messaging that we are pushing out on behalf of the county is, or the city, or who, or all the other jurisdictions that may be involved. Is clear, concise, understandable, and most importantly accurate. We are also holding a wildfire tabletop exercise here in a couple of weeks. That is going to be kind of a sit around the table discussion. We're going to have all the emergency operations center staff, bringing in partners from the weather service and APS. And we're going to talk through a scenario. If we have a wildfire here, what does that mean? We'll talk about that and make sure everybody's kind of understanding their own roles and responsibilities, but also the capabilities of all of our partner agencies. And then we will kind of throw in another inject the fire has grown too kind of thing. So we can really kind of talk through a lot of that stuff and ensure that we have top level communications. The third little bullet point there is, is a program that we're very proud of. We're kind of looking long-term on this as well. You'll see the County Emergency Management and NAU E O C lab experience. So this started a couple, excuse me, started last year. Is a way to close and identify gap that we had between academic theory and classroom knowledge. And giving it more of a practical, real world application. How can you apply what you've learned in the classroom into a real world setting? So last year and again this year, it's going to be at the end of March. We can get you guys the dates in case you, you guys want to come by on a Saturday. We're bringing in NAU students. We're going to set up the county's E O C. We're going to simulate the 2022 tunnel fire. We put those students in the actual E O C positions with our staff mentoring those positions. And then we give them real injects from real world examples that happened during the tunnel fire and have them process through that, just as if they were working in the E O C that day. That allows them to take the, the knowledge and the theory from the classroom and really apply it in a, a real world setting, in a training setting. This is also growing to a 16-week credit class at NAU. We have written curriculum that our partners at NAU are going to be taking to their curriculum committee very soon. Where we're going to identify a lot of other daily emergency management things that we see in Northern Arizona. Everything from grant funding, relationship building, tribal relations with our tribal partners. And, you know, really all the disaster, the recovery, what comes after the fires out. So we're really excited about that and we'll be sending you guys some more information pretty soon. The next one up is A Q S. That is the Arizona Qualification System. If you're familiar with wildfire firefighters and, and the national wildfire standards, you often hear referred to as a red card. You know, and, and a firefighter or, you know, an individual is given a card that says they are qualified to do a job. The Arizona qualification system is very similar to that, but this is for emergency operations center and incident management team staff. So there are different positions that you can become credentialed in. After some experience and training, there's 10 different training classes and roughly 260, I think 265 different items that you have to be able to show proficiency in for credentialing to be, work in an E O C with, to be issued a gold card. That's up there because it's kind of a little bit of kudos for us and hopefully a little bit of assurances for you and for the community. That Coconino County Emergency Management is the first department in the state to have all of our commanding general staff positions of an E O C gold card credential through the Arizona qualification system. That allows us to not only perform at a high level here for the county, but we have also had the, the opportunity to deploy to other counties to support their operations in other states as well. And the last one down there is our emergency notification system. It's powered by Rave Mobile Safety. We do consistent, ongoing training for that on a almost weekly basis. I would say it's kind of fun in our office. We do send out regular alerts anyway. But if we haven't sent one out for a while, a lot of times I'll just be working on my own computer and Kelsey will walk over to Chance and says, I just got a call from the sheriff's office and you need to send this message right now. And to see if Chance can pull it up and, and type out a message and how quickly that takes. And then almost in a little retaliation, a couple of days later, Chance will return the favor. But it allows us to, to maintain that proficiency, that we're able to send out critical life safety messaging, you know, accurate and timely. Some of the other things that we do is our, our partner engagement. So we do a lot of work with internal county departments. And if you've had a chance to take a look at the emergency operations plan, you'll notice that there are annexes that call out six specific county departments in there. We've identified those departments as having critical roles regardless of what an incident or disaster may be. And we've created an annex that is kind of a checklist of here's all the things that you are going to be responsible for, should we have an incident? We sat down and worked with each of those departments to ensure that these were task and responsibilities they could do, that they wanted to do. And, you know, were appropriately assigned to them. So in addition to emergency management, there's also public works, county communications, parks and rec, community development. And I always forget one. HHS, the largest one. I don't know why I was, forget them. Those partners are integral in anything, any disaster response that we do, we call on them. They are a great partners to have and stand up. Couple of things on that, I guess, a couple of caveats. There's one department in there that is a, a very valued and trusted partner that's not listed in there. And I'll call out, a lot of people ask us, why is the sheriff's department not in there? Do you not care about them? Absolutely not. As the chief primary law enforcement agent, they're hanging up. I'm just seeing if they're listening. But as the chief primary law enforcement agency for the county, a lot of their roles and responsibilities during disasters are already codified in existing state statutes, local ordinances and department policies. So by adding them into the plan, kind of made it redundant and really didn't serve much of a purpose. So we rely on them and their policies that they already have built out for our disaster response. Now, the other thing that I want to point out is a highlight that you'll see early on in the plan, and that's the philosophy of the county's one county approach. You know, our county's one county response means it doesn't matter what department someone works in. Whenever we put out a call for volunteers, we, we get folks from all over the county to come in to support. So we operate the county's call center. We'll have employees from elections, from adult probation, from juvenile, from all over the county. Will come in and support with their supervisor's blessing. They will kind of, we set aside their day job to come to the assistance of our, our citizens. So it, it can't really be understated how impactful that is. You know, that we rely on everyone from our organization to come together to step up. A couple of other.
Hey, Tim, if you don't mind, I'll just interrupt real quickly. I know Liz Archuleta is here and she has a call at 2:30. And just wanted to recognize as we're talking about partnerships, I know she has a call at 2:30. Sorry to interrupt. But I was thinking about volunteer coordination.
Well, if you're going to do that, we also have Sybil Smith.
We have Sybil.
One of United Way's big volunteers. So both of them.
Sorry, not sorry. But I know Liz has a call, but I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and if they want to say anything. But, you know, VoAD, United Way volunteer coordination has been essential. I personally have a lot of experience with that and the experience has been wonderful. Why? Because in that involuntary coordination effort, they're able to, to coordinate activities that we, the county, just can't. We might be overwhelmed with responding to the emergency. We might be overwhelmed with so many other things. These efforts are so, so crucial to the overall effort.
Well, since you brought it up, you know, and you probably want to have them have an opportunity to say something as well. But, you know, certainly Supervisor Vasquez and myself during the 2022 fires and post wildfire flooding spent a lot of time with these two and, and Sybil, you were incredible with all the volunteer hours you gave to help people with sandbagging and to sign people up for sandbagging. And, you know, just, it just shows it takes all of us. It's neighbors helping neighbors. It's truly a community effort, especially in these emergencies. So I really wanted to acknowledge them and, and, and obviously, Tim, I know you're talking about preparedness. And it, it's twofold. It's one to prepare and working with our community partners for that, and then the emergency response. So anyway, thank you. And we want to acknowledge them as well. And I know Supervisor Vasquez probably has.
Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Thank you so much. It's really an honor to be here and just talk a little bit about the partnership that United Way of Northern Arizona has. I mean, I have a lot of experience, as you know, with wildfires and subsequent flooding back from 2010. And then several years thereafter as a, as a county supervisor, but also as a, as a volunteer with United Way of Northern Arizona. So now in this seat is President and CEO of United Way of Northern Arizona. We are really proud of the fact that we are one of your partners. And what United Way does is we mobilize volunteers to be able to assist the community in times of crisis. Whether that be wildfires, whether that be flooding, whether it be some other kind of natural disaster, that's what we do. So it's neighbors helping neighbors. We organize that. It's in a very efficient fashion. We train volunteers. We actually are onsite when we have people, when they have gloves and shovels and whatever it is that they need to do to help people take mud out of their homes or place sandbags in preparation for flooding. During times of wildfire, we, and through all, and throughout a disaster, we open up a crisis fund. Where 100% of that fund goes directly to assist community members. Things that, you know, government cannot do, but the nonprofit world and, and volunteers can do. And so it is truly is a partnership. We work together. We also open up a volunteer assistance center when there's a crisis that lasts a long time, where we're able to actually work with volunteers to have them come to the volunteer assistance center and also have community members come to the volunteer assistance center. And we mobilize all of our nonprofit partners to make sure that we're assisting again you and the community where it's needed most. So it's been a partnership that's worked very well since 2010. We do have an agreement with you and I'm here today just to listen to the presentation as you are, so that we're prepared for what could be, you know, a very busy summer. And so, but we're knocking on wood that it's not, but nonetheless, we're here, we're ready. And we're ready to mobilize whenever you need us. So thank you so much for your partnership and thank you to people like Sybil and all of our volunteers that work so diligently to be prepared. It's been incredible to work with emergency management and all of the team here. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And we talk, we, we hear from Sybil? No? Nope? She was just ready to work, huh? But, but thank you too, Sybil. Thank you so much. And then any board members want to say? Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, first off, I just want to say thank you to our partners and all the, all the different volunteer groups that, that come and have stepped up over the years in, in these pipeline and tunnel especially, but also the flooding in the sunny side and, and all the sandbag efforts. It was a lot of work and without United Way and Red Cross and some of these other groups, we couldn't have gotten these, these, um, these projects done to, to help our, our, our folks. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that. And then also just want to make a point out on the, on the preparedness, uh, presentation. I really liked the presentation, but I noticed you have the, the Sedona Siren project on there and not the sirens in the sunny side. I was just wondering how that fit into your emergency plans.
Let me address that now. I see Supervisor Fowler has her hand up. Do you want to address that is the next part? Okay.
Supervisor Fowler?
Jackson? Yes, Madam Chair, I-
Yeah.
Um, and I'm chair, I'm sorry, I need to go. Let us-
Lindsay, we're ready whenever you are.
Thanks, Liz, and thanks for being here with us today. It's very strange seeing you on the other side here.
So as we're pulling that back up, um, you know, County Manager, thanks for, for bringing that up. I didn't know they had a call at 2:30. I did want to call them out. You know, we talk a lot about, um, our response entities and all of our organizations coming together, uh, during times of disaster, but the community really steps up as well. Um, you know, as evident during our, our recent flooding events that we had. So managing those volunteers is, uh, a, a challenging endeavor. You know, it can't really be understated, uh, the importance that, you know, the way plays for our volunteer and donation management. We really do appreciate them. So, um, I think, Andy, thanks for letting me know that they had a, a hard deadline. All right. So the Sedona Siren Project. Supervisor Vasquez? So one of the other things that we're working for is preparedness, uh, the city of Sedona. Uh, well, let me back up. So, uh, as you all are aware, a couple of years ago, County Emergency Management was awarded some congressionally designated funding for, um, EOC enhancements and overall preparedness, um, you know, expenditures for that. So one of the things that we earmarked in that were, uh, expanding the siren systems across the county to communities that may need those. Um, as you're aware, that we've had a lot of success with the four sirens that we have installed in the, uh, Sunnyside neighborhood. Um, and, and because of that, a lot of people have reached out to us and said, "Tell me more about that." You know, and if you're not familiar with those systems, um, they are not the old tornado sirens that I knew growing up, uh, you know, in, in North Mississippi years ago that, uh, were just loud and obnoxious, um, and, and that's all it was, was an alert tone. You know, these sirens now, um, are able to activate a tone. Uh, they will broadcast a spoken message. So for Sunnyside neighborhood, they will broadcast, um, flash flooding information in English, Spanish and Navajo. Uh, so we're able to alert anyone that may be in the area that doesn't have a cell phone or, um, your other device that it's going to get the, the subsequent emergency notifications that come out. So based on that, the city of Sedona reached out to us, said, "We are very interested in this for Uptown Sedona. Uh, we know we have a high tourist population there. Not everybody's going to be registered in the notification system. So how can we implement, um, some type of system to alert visitors should there be some type of disaster?" So we've been working with them. Um, we will be, uh, submitting an IGA, uh, from the, the camp, between the county and the city before the board in the next couple of weeks, I believe, uh, for your consideration that will allow the county to, uh, expend those funds to basically allow us to, uh, procure, design, implement, activate and get a siren system in place, uh, which will then allow the city of Sedona with County Emergency Management as a backup to, um, send out alerts should they have a need. So, um, it is directly related to, um, the Sunnyside, the success of the Sunnyside siren system. The next one on is the PSPS, uh, Public Safety Power Shut-Off from APS. Uh, so we've heard them talk a lot about what the, the system is, uh, but I kind of wanted to talk also about, um, what County Emergency Management's role is during a public safety power shut-off. Uh, and I want to start by, um, really giving, um, a shout out and thanks to APS, uh, from the initial, uh, discussions of this, they would call us and sit down. Um, you know, they would ask us, "If we do this, how is that going to impact the county? What are you, what are your thoughts on this and on that?" So really felt like we had a seat at the table. We were really able to kind of voice our concerns, voice our thoughts, um, on, on the whole system, uh, every step of the way through that. So one of the things that we brought up was how can we make sure we're notifying the community when there is, uh, a potential, um, PSPS shut-off for an impacted area? We have volunteered the use of the county's emergency notification system to help deliver, uh, additional messaging, uh, working with APS and our, uh, communications team. We're going to kind of craft those messages. We can use our system to kind of help magnify press releases that they're going to put out. Our system allows us the ability to, um, target just the areas, the impacted area. So it doesn't have to be a county-wide message. It can only go to the residents that are in that impacted zone to say, "Hey, this is coming. Here's a press release from APS. Please take a look at this. Here's their number to give them a call." Just to make sure people are aware, right? Um, all the way up to, uh, you know, the, the day of the, the, the shut-off, whatever that may be, we will also use, um, our IPaaS capability, which is FEMA's Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. Um, think of your Amber Alerts. Uh, it's not a registration base, but it's a location base. If your device goes into a certain area and you get an alert, whether you signed up for a system or not, that's going to allow us to reach our visitor population. You know, maybe people that are just up here camping for the weekend, uh, they're staying in an Airbnb, something like that. That'll allow us to, to further make sure that we're reaching everyone for that.
And actually, we're going to be going back and talking about FEMA here in DC soon. Does, um, I, it, does FEMA pay for our IPaaS system?
Um, they do. It doesn't cost the county anything.
Good.
Um, we are the, uh, County Emergency Management, Coquena County is the only IPaaS, um, authority, uh, in the county. So we send those messages out on behalf of all of the jurisdictions. Okay. Um, so, you know, we, we will also be taking a look at, um, what does that mean for impacted residents during a PSPS? So, um, you know, other conversations that we've had with, um, our other partners and APS is do we need to consider cooling centers? Do we need to consider overnight shelters? Um, you know, how can we, uh, make sure that we're providing for people, um, who may have those, um, you know, powered medical devices, uh, that, that they need that support? So one of the things that I'll highlight, um, now, what we'll really want to stress when we get to kind of the public, um, awareness piece is for the emergency notification system, one of the big important functions for that system-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You brought it up and I actually meant to talk about it when APS was up as well. You know, if there needs to be a shutdown of power, uh, and I know thankfully we aren't Phoenix, so we don't have 120 degree temperatures, but if it's going to be over a long period of time or if there are needs for cooling centers or overnight shelters, or maybe people who do, don't have, for example, generators that may use, use a CPAT machine or whatever, are, is there, will there be centers set up if this shutdown is going to be over a certain period of time?
Short answer, yes. And how do we get that information? Um, one of the things that the County Emergency Notification System has in there, when you go in and create your account, you're able to self-report to us, uh, through the secure site if you have any, um, general evacuation access or functional needs or any powered medical devices. Um, so when we send those messages out, when we start getting notices, um, you know, from APS, talking about two, three, four, five days in advance of it may impact, we're able to run a report in that area and kind of specifically identify those folks that have let us know that this is the case, uh, very similar to the system that APS has, uh, in their billing system now, but we can reach out to those people ahead of time and, um, and kind of help coordinate if there's a need there. Um, you know, I will say, you know, we could have a power outage for any reason, you know, if we have a wildfire or, or something come through. So it really is no different than any of the other existing procedures, um, that any other emergency response that we would have. We're still going to coordinate with APS. They're still going to work with us and the locals. Um, prime example being, uh, now that we had a couple of winters ago, uh, down in Munce Park, uh, you know, just kind of coming in and setting up a shelter down at the community church down there. So we do. And speaking of shelters, one of the recent conversations we've been having is, uh, with our regional Red Cross representation, uh, kind of making sure that we all are, are operating off the same sheet of music with, uh, populations. So they can kind of help do more predictions of if we have an impacted area, um, anywhere around, uh, the greater Flagstaff area and even then, you know, up in Page and other Artline communities. What is the reasonable number of people we should expect to, to need to shelter? And then where can they go to identify shelters in those communities? So we're really, uh, in constant communication with them to help identify, uh, other venues for, uh, whether it be, you know, regional school districts, hotels, things like that, identify shelter locations, uh, throughout the county. That's one of their big, um, yeah, I guess plus-ups of trying to increase those. I pushed about eight buttons and something's going to blow up real soon. I was hoping you'd say that 30 minutes ago. I've always said computers are great when you don't need one. I do. Not that one. All right, we're back. So another big component, we do a lot of public engagement, but we also have focused on community engagement. You know, so when we recently had a vacancy in our office, one of the things that we look at is, um, what roles, where can we grow? What do we need to fill? You know, and, uh, you've often heard us say, you know, the right person with the right skills and the right job. And one of the roles that we needed to really fill that I really wanted to plus up was our community engagement presence, you know, getting out in the community as much as we can, finding out where those neighborhood meetings are, getting on the agenda, just setting up a table, setting up a booth, uh, and really getting out and meeting in the neighborhoods with our constituents. So, um, we brought on a, a, a young lady who fits that role. So Lana, uh, interned with us for a little while and now is on full-time, uh, and that is her, um, that is her role is to increase our community engagement presence, um, and, and doing a phenomenal job. So her role, um, is to steer our entire department towards focusing on that individual and family preparedness. You know, we know that, um, we'll use a winter storm and a shelter in place, for example, that if, if I'm going to be stuck at home with my family and I know that, you know, I'm, I'm going to be there because the snow's too deep and I need to plan on two or three days of just taking care of myself and being self-sustained for that long. If I can do that, I'm not calling the sheriff's office or I'm not calling the fire department to come take care of just me. That frees up those limited valuable resources to focus on community level issues instead of having to, um, go to the individual household. So the more prepared we are as a family, as an individual, the better we can, uh, respond to a disaster. So really getting that information out, uh, and helping our communities, uh, not really telling them what they need, but helping understand what their needs are. Because we know that the city of Page is going to have different needs than the city of Williams, who's going to have different needs in the city of Sedona. So understanding what the needs, those needs are, then allow us, um, to really come in and kind of give more targeted, uh, advice on overall preparedness. So we've sat down with, uh, County Communications and a lot of our other partners, fire districts, um, have been a big one to invite us to a lot of their, um, coming into spring meetings, um, you know, things like that, just different county gatherings, so we can kind of help get the word out. The other one is, uh, or the last one down, and I'll touch on just briefly again, is the county's emergency notification system. It's got a couple of different components. Uh, one is a registration-based notification. So we encourage folks to go in and actually create an account. We're going to show you how to do that shortly. Um, that allows us to send messaging to anyone inside a, a lack of better words, just the box that we draw on the map. Uh, we also have the IPaaS capability, so we can target the visitors or, uh, our tourists in the area, uh, which is more location-based. And I put this in here because as part of our ongoing training and exercise, we're going to be holding a countywide test of the emergency notification system on March 12th. It's a Wednesday at noon. Okay? Uh, what we are going to do then, and, uh, we're going to be pushing out a lot of press releases and a lot of public information for that. So when you guys see that, uh, we appreciate any shares or help with that. We're going to send a text message and email to every device, uh, in the system. Um, so what we want people to do is, uh, to go in ahead of time. If you haven't created an account, please go create an account. If you have an account, do us a favor, take 60 seconds, go in, just log in and make sure your information is correct, it's valid, um, and then everything is up to date. Um, one caveat with that, if we do get any kind of inclement weather, if there's anything else going on, we will postpone the test. Um, this will be if it's kind of nice blue sky weather outside, uh, and not if there's any potential for miscommunication.
Can you get, uh, for us, uh, something we can, we can share in our social media sites? Cause I, I, we, those are, I love to push this kind of information out to the community. So that'd be helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely. The last real big piece of preparedness, and it kind of goes into mitigation a little bit, uh, is the county's, um, fire restrictions ordinance, you know, and, and, and the different, um, stages of fire restriction and, and how we go about making those decisions. So, uh, about this time last year, we came before the board, uh, and the board approved ordinance 2024 dash 01, which is the current wildfire defense ordinance. And this was, the updated draft was a result of, uh, a lot of collaboration and discussion between, uh, law enforcement and fire partners to kind of find a way to incentivize mitigation measures in the ordinance. So if you look in now, um, you know, for example, one of the things that the old ordinance used to say, uh, under stage one, it is 100% restricted. You, no way, no how will you have a fire that is wood burning of any kind. You can't do it. After looking at a lot of the science of that and talking with, um, with partners, uh, we, we realized that, well, what if we have people clear, create defensible space? Remove that, uh, the combustible materials, that harmful vegetation, those pine needles from a certain radius from around that fire pit? And it, then it's, it's safe to have that. So there's, there's some incentive there, um, that if you would like to, uh, you know, still enjoy fires, camping, you know, your, your fire pits and things like that, create that defensible space. So there's a lot of incentive into that and it's been very successful in the communities. It also outlines the fire restrictions. Uh, so there is no change to what we are all familiar with, stage one, stage two, stage three restrictions. Um, they become, uh, more restrictive as the stages increase, which are, um, determined on current conditions, um, in the communities. So we get a lot of questions on how do we determine what the stage will be? Uh, and I would say that those start with weekly coordination calls, uh, with all of our regional, federal, state, local partners. Um, we all will, will get in and, and will compare, um, what is the science? What is the, you know, the fuel moisture? What are our staffing capabilities? Uh, it all starts with the call from the weather server, or a report from the weather service. So we know what the environmental conditions are and what the forecast call for. Uh, we'll look at, um, resources available should a wildfire start, um, and a myriad of other factors that go in to determine if we've met the, the, the criteria and the threshold to, uh, enter into a fire restriction stage or, uh, what that stage should be. Typically, those calls will start at the, around the end of March, first of April, uh, but they have started- But they have started, last week was the first one, because partners realized with the conditions that they are, we went ahead and got to jump on those and got started. So when we look at, one question that we get in our office specifically is, when will the county itself go into fire? You know, and that's a decision that we will work with our partners on, relying on their research and their science and their expertise. Because quite frankly, if we have, and I'll go back down to Muntz Park as my example, you know, if someone's living in Muntz Park and the county says we're in stage one restrictions, but the national forest is not in restrictions, you know, then it becomes very confusing for law enforcement to enforce. It becomes very confusing for the community to understand. And quite frankly, it's, you know, sometimes it's not as fair that a resident can't have, you know, a fire in their yard, but just on the other side of the fence in the national forest, you know, folks up camping, they can. So we, we work on a lot of coordination and to really ensure that we're operating on kind of the same sheet of music with, with our fire restrictions.
And if we can just to make it clear for the public, the county does not set the, the levels for the closure of the forest.
Correct.
I want to make sure we make, because I know we get calls all the time for that. Although we do appreciate their partnership and collaboration with us and our input with us, but that is a decision of the Forest Service.
Absolutely. Our ordinance only applies to unincorporated lands of Coquenino County. It does not apply to federal lands, does not apply within municipalities, although some of our municipalities do want to follow our guidance on that if they don't have their own. But the federal governments and our tribal entities have their own regulations for those.
And Tim, can you explain a little bit how we work in conjunction, for example, with the city of Flagstaff? Since so much of our unincorporated and city of Flag, it's right across the street, literally.
Sure. So a lot of that just comes in on those, those weekly coordination calls. We really sit down and have kind of that open dialogue of what are each one of our jurisdictions seeing? And it's report outs from everywhere, from all of our national forests, the state DFFM lands, all the way down to the cities and municipalities and our local fire districts. What are they seeing? So it's, it is a very coordinated collaborative effort to ensure that decisions are made as a team, that they're not just, it looks dry outside, therefore we're in stage one. And there's a lot of, of discussion and research that goes behind those decisions. But recognizing that we do have a lot of jurisdictions with legal authority over fire restrictions over their respective lands, that we understand that can kind of create some confusion. Where can I go find that information? If I go from county to Kaibab National Forest to Coquenino National Forest? So one of the things that we started in the department a couple of years ago is we created a fire restrictions webpage. So if you'll see the link there on the screen, it's coquenino dot az.gov slash fire restrictions. You can get a copy of the county's current ordinance. But also if you scroll down, we have links and a chart for every jurisdiction in Coquenino County that can enact fire restrictions. And we will, after each one of these coordination calls, we will update that. So it's kind of a one-stop shop that someone can go to this website and see who's in what stage of restriction or any restrictions at all. There's also links to each one of those partners' websites for further info. So moving in a little bit to the mitigation piece now, that image there is the cover of the 2021 Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this is a FEMA required plan that we are required to update every five years. But it is intentionally will sit down and identify and rank the county's top 10 natural hazards. It's probably no surprise to anyone that countywide wildfire is our top hazard. And I don't honestly see that changing anytime soon, but we have other natural hazards, you know, flooding, drought, winter storms, earthquake. And all these, this information is compiled not only into a document that tells us what these hazards are, but it also lets us set mitigation goals and strategies for how we want to address those. So since this is a multi-jurisdictional plan, it includes Coquenino County organization as a whole, and then all of our municipalities in this current plan. So we sit down with, with the town of Fronia and their, you know, their ranking of their hazards may be different than what the town of Tucias will be. Each jurisdiction has a section in the plan that we can all identify and identify common goals and common themes. This plan is set for renewal in the summer, I think July of 2026. It usually takes 16 to 18 months to update. So you guys will be seeing very soon, hopefully, a contract for us to hire a vendor to, to perform the update for this. One thing that I want to stress for the update is a increased push. And something that I want to do is an increased push for community engagement. This is not a plan for the county to tell the community, this is what you need to do. This plan is relies heavily on community feedback for the community members to tell us, this is what in my neighborhood, what I see as the top natural hazard. So we really value that community input, especially when we, when we look at not only just identifying the hazards, what can we do about? You know, what is, what is each jurisdiction? What are your priorities? What are you willing to do? How can we tackle this together? So there's a big community engagement piece for that. So we'll definitely be reaching out to each one of you for meetings in your districts and things like that when we get to that point, probably later on this year, probably, probably in the fall. And I don't want to even pretend to spend a whole lot of time that I can talk about forest restoration as, as well as the flood control district, Lucinda and Jay can. You know, we heard this morning about different grants and funding opportunities that they're pursuing about, you know, forest restoration, hazardous fuels, vegetation removal, things like that. So that is a big piece of the mitigation we're going around in the county. Excuse me. These are just some of the entities that, that we partner with to conduct a lot of that work. This is definitely not an exhaustive list. There are so many more that help us. I will say that we have one grant right now that is pending FEMA environmental review that will allow us to do some of the work that Lucinda mentioned this morning of actually getting into the private property areas and completing some work. It's identifying some parcels in Muntz Park and in Cachina Village. So we're hoping to get an answer from FEMA and approval for that and start to be in the work on that pretty soon. So we just want to highlight on here that we appreciate the hard work that our partnerships are doing. So we, you know, we, we always look at preparedness. We always look at mitigation, but we know that, you know, we can lessen the impacts of disasters, but we can't prevent those. So when they do occur, what is our response posture going to look like? So the county operates, the countywide emergency operations center. And this is a service that we provide for the county and any of our jurisdictions, any of our municipalities, Grand Canyon National Park. Anyone that, that has an incident occur in their jurisdiction and they need some support, we operate the EOC on their behalf. Emergency Operations Center is focused on response, support and coordination. So we're not going to be out, you know, directing wildfire resources or flooding resources, but we will operate in, in conjunction with them to support the needs of the incident out in the field. The EOC is always open and active. Because our team has been credentialed under the AQAS system, we are able to staff all command and general staff positions daily out of our office. And they're all here with me today. So I want to appreciate them for showing up as well. But we can also operate our EOC just in a moment's notice. But if something grows larger and we need to expand the footprint or we need to bring in additional personnel, we can do that and we'll elevate that EOC to the footprint that you guys are familiar with over at King Street in the Ponderosa. In addition to the EOC, some of the other capabilities that we have, we have a substantial amount of equipment that we can deploy out for, for various incidents. So if you've been up and down Four Valley or 180 lately, you've probably seen four message boards between roughly the peak senior living and almost a snowball road. Those are Coquenino County Emergency Management signboards that we were able to procure from DFFM fundings a couple of years ago. You know, right now they have safe driving messaging, but we can change those remotely to encourage people, for example, not to park on the shoulder of the road or play in snow on the shoulder of the road, creating that safety hazard. We also have our Polaris UTV that we can, will often loan out, we can loan out and go off-road up into impacted areas for damage assessments, flood control for, you know, any of the work that they're doing up on the east side of the mountain. Or in case any of the supervisors want to go tour some of the flooding things in their district, looking at you Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Horstman, you got to fly the drone, which is not included on there, but is another capability that we have. We, we can deploy out our drone for, it's got capabilities to help us find wildfire hotspots and assist with really incident, really any incident that we can be called for.
Is the trailer, do you have that yet?
So for the first time in public viewing today is a photo there of the, the concept design for our mobile EOC trailer. It is currently being built by the vendor in Illinois. Our goal is within the next 45 days to have that on site and have it finished. This is going to significantly enhance our capabilities of very remote response. This will be available for use by any public service agency. You know, if the forest service needs it, if the sheriff's department needs it, it, the idea is to get it out into the field and have it used. It will have connectivity for Starlink connectivity, so it is completely self-sustaining. We can take it just about anywhere. I would like to point out the, the graphics and the logos on there were not designed by me. My team over here, these guys put that together. I don't have the creative vision to do that. So our department, they sat down, Kelsey and Lana really worked their magic and computer and took a lot of influence from Chance and Nicole to really make that happen. So we're really excited for that. When that shows up, we'll bring it by and give you guys a tour for sure. There's another part of the, our response is often evacuation. So wanted to turn this over to Sheriff Axland to talk about a lot of their considerations and what the sheriff's department looks at when they go to make decisions for evacuation or not.
Thanks, Tim. We just, I think Tim only gave us one slide here, so that's perfect for us. Brett Axland, Sheriff of Coquenino County. As far as our responsibilities in a major, major disaster or a fire flood type event, we are, it's pretty consistent surrounding law enforcement for any, any of those things. First of all, we, we would order the evacuation, but in, in an event like a fire, we're going to rely on information from our, our fire partners. They're going to be the experts in how a fire acts, where it goes, how fast it goes. So in all cases during a fire, we're going to use their recommendations as far as what needs to be evacuated and what levels of evacuation they need to be in, whether it's a set or a go status. We learned very quickly during like the tunnel fire that those evacuation orders can change at the drop of the hat. I think several calls that Tim and I had together were very short and minutes apart as far as evacuation goes. So it was very nice to have a very experienced person on the other end of that message system to be able to know exactly what we needed to put out, to be able to get those messages authorized to go out as quickly as we were able to do. So that was nice to have. Once they are out by evacuation, it sounds like an easy thing to do to put out an evacuation order. But once they are out, we are responsible for the security of those areas. Like we saw in the tunnel fire, we had, we, we very quickly got way beyond our capabilities of covering those areas. So we had to call resources in from Mojave County Sheriff's Office, Navajo County Sheriff's Office and Yavapai to help us out. They were great, sent, sent us squads of folks to be able to help patrol those areas. In addition to those, we had other county departments helping us to include Public Works, Emergency Management, just to be able to shut down roads and keep those shut down. It is important to know that we cannot make arrests if people choose not to leave their areas. But once they do leave that area at whatever given time, they won't be allowed back in, just for their own safety. Along with that is traffic control. We'll have to control roadblocks, control ingress and egress out of those areas. And then finally, we have to make the decision when reentry is appropriate and safe for everybody to do so. Again, it is a decision we make with our, our fire partners, whoever those may be. Reentry is a tricky thing because once we allow the public back into their, their homes or their, their communities, they will not, we've learned, they will not leave. So we only do it once and we're, we will make sure that we are at a point where we're safe to go back in. But keeping in mind that a lot of times are the public safety fire folks would like to have a zero chance of of danger to those communities. And we have to realize that our, our folks need to get back, back into their homes. So we have to take that into consideration when we allow reentry. So there's been several times where we've had to be very, we've had to do a lot of quick talking with our fire partners to be able to agree that it is safe enough to let our folks back in. That, those are our basic responsibilities in any kind of an evacuation. So if there's any questions, I can answer those. Great, thank you.
Other than to thank you for, you and the sheriff's department. So obviously such an essential part of our, our emergency team and thank you for everything you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Supervisor Horstman, you kind of, you stole my thoughts right there. You know, Sheriff, you said this is only one slide, but you know, the, the impacts of evacuation and everything going on typically during the lights and sirens phase of a disaster are really, you know, we can't underestimate those. That, that's a lot of work. Those guys do a great job on that. So our job in the EOC is to support whatever they need to, to make sure that is as early and as, as safe as possible. One of the other things that relation to evacuations that the EOC will also do is, you know, we will coordinate with our sheltering partners to identify shelter locations, work with community, or excuse me, the county communications team to get that messaging out to make sure people know, you know, while you need to leave, here's where you can go and be safe. We'll provide some services and assistance for you. We'll also communicate out with the Health and Human Services team. They'll set up our community assistance center to provide those resources for those impacted by evacuations and disasters. So for the last few remaining slides, just a couple more, I want to kind of shift more from talking about what the county is prepared to do, what the county does, and really focus on what the community can do. You know, if I have to leave a takeaway for, you know, the general public at home, what is the message that, that we need to convey? And first I want to start with the ready, set, go program. You know, when, when the sheriff calls me and says, we need to send, we need to evacuate this area. This is the language that we use. This is adopted by all 15 county sheriffs to simplify and streamline the language around evacuations. So very simply, if, I'm not sure if you can read the, the small print on your screen there, but ready? We are currently in ready status right now. Skies are blue. There's no current disasters. There's no issues. Now's the time that we can go and prepare for those disasters. I can make my plan. I can decide what I need to do to evacuate. What am I going to need to get together? I've got time to do that. Because when we send out a notice that says your area is in set, that means there is the potential for imminent life safety coming down the road, right? We want to make sure that you are ready to go. So for me, set stage means you take that, your stuff that you're going to evacuate with, take it out of the hall closet and put it by the front door or put it in the car. Because when we issue the go notice, it's time to go. It's not time to start packing then. And, and one of the, the lessons we learned during tunnel fire is we had anywhere, you know, sometimes seven, eight, nine minutes between the time we sent out a notice to a neighborhood says you're in set, be prepared to evacuate, until the time we sent the notice that says go, you need to evacuate. That, so set is not the time to get ready. Go ahead and start working on that now. We'd also like for you to go ahead and sign up for the county's emergency notification system. Know your evacuation zone. And make your family plan. Everybody's needs are going to be different. Everybody's needs are going to be different. One thing that we learned during tunnel fire was a lot of the community, a lot of the residents out there had large animals, you know, horses. And I'm not sure if you've ever had the opportunity to load a horse in a trailer, but it's not necessarily a 60 second thing, right? So what what we learned from the community out there that said, if you put me in set, that's my evacuation, I'm going to go ahead and leave, right? But know what you're going to take with you. So if you go on our website, there's a lot of resources there that will explain and guide you through what you may want to put in an evacuation kit, how to build one. We were able to, what we call build a go bag on a budget. So you see Lana there in the pictures, that was a project we had that hopefully removes some of the obstacles or one of the two major obstacles of cost for needing to buy items for an evacuation kit. We built the entire kit for about $150. So it can be very affordable. We're also working with City Flagstaff Sustainability and partnering with some of the resilience hubs, the Market of Dreams, as well as the Murdock Center, City Sustainability's putting together some go kits that they're going to be able to provide to the community through grant there and some other locations where you can go and collect resources. The other thing to do is provide that defensible space around your your home. When I talk to a lot of our fire districts and told them we were having this meeting today, they overwhelmingly ask us to please convey the message of defensible space. Cleaning up the pine needles, those fine fuels out of your yard is critical to protecting your home, your structure. So please check that out. Go to the Firewise US, the firewise.org. But they even said, call us. That's what we're here for. I know many of our fire districts will send a crew by to properties to give assessments for hazardous fuels, vegetation removal, but give them a call and they'll be glad to help you out with that. Excuse me. So this is the last slide and Sheriff, if you're permission, I'd like to just kind of leave this up if we have any questions or anything, but I'd like to leave this one up. And these are our two QR codes. And we are happy to give this to any of you guys to help put on your your websites, your socials. But you'll see the QR code over on the left, the website at the bottom, coconino dot az.gov slash evac map. Pick up your phone, whether you're watching virtually or you're here in the room. And if you hold your phone up, open the camera, scan that QR code, that will take you directly to the county's evacuation map. You can plug in your address, find out what zone you're in and learn that now. Also, the QR code over on the right, you see the website at the bottom, coconino dot az.gov slash ready. If you go to that one, that will take you to our website with links to where you can go sign up for county emergency notifications. The link there will direct you the way you know you got to the right place. It is a smart 911 branded website. That is the product from Rave Mobile Safety that we use for that. So please go in and register your information. And if you already have registered your information, go in and just double check, verify that your account information is correct and up to date. And with that very brief presentation, Sheriff, we'll ask for any questions.
I was going to tell you to stop. And we know we're going to stop. Just kidding. Yeah. Thank you so much for all the good information. And I know that a lot of people do listen to our, to our board meetings. And I just want to say, you know, anything that you can share with the board to put on the website pages and things like that, I think would be very beneficial also because regardless of our, the situation we're in with our weather, you know, anytime, anything can happen too. So we've got to make sure that we're prepared, especially with the dry areas, you know. And so just want to say thank you and all the presenters and people that have been here with us this long. And, you know, thank you for your support. Thank you for your partnership. And I just want to say thank you again, you know, to the sheriff also. And so thank you so much. And I don't know if any other board members want to make a comment at this time. Supervisor Horstman?
Well, Supervisor Horstman? Well, you know, first and foremost, thank you. And we appreciate to see you here with our partners. You know, I know that the Forest Service wasn't able to be here today, but I think it should be noted that we meet with them on a monthly basis. And I know they have ongoing communication with you as well. And it certainly are one of our essential partners for preparedness and needless to say, emergency response. And also have been a huge partner with us in terms of trying to get us out of this vicious cycle of, you know, spring catastrophic fires and then post wildfire flooding. And we're doing that through our partnership with the Forest Service, City of Flagstaff with the State of Arizona to do landscape scale forest restoration work, both in Bill Williams Mountain and also, of course, in the Upper Rio and other places too. So it is, as was said earlier by Sybil, it does take a village. And it takes a community that is educated and understands the dangers and the risks and a proaction by all of us to mitigate those those risks and to be prepared and to work with each other in the case of an emergency. So we know you, Tim, and your staff are key, the frontline, if you will, for Coconino County and for our community. And that's why we're doing all this is for our community. So I want a big thank you to you and to the partners. It's great to see that National Weather Service, we rely on them so much, you know, during the emergency responses. I mean, they were just absolutely instrumental on when we could go there, what we could do there and to keep our community updated and alert as to what was happening and where we were with regards to the fires. So everybody here, a huge thank you, Sheriff's Department and our United Way and others that have partnered with us, because it's taken all of us to be prepared and to respond in the case of an emergency. So neighbors helping neighbors, it's a great way to say it. So thank you.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, again, just thank you. Wanted to put out a shout out again to the partners and recognize National Weather Service. You know, they are federally federal government entity that is also being hit. And we need, we need them as well as all our other partners to be able to get through these kinds of disasters that are in on the horizon, you know, because it's not a question of if, it's when. And so seeing how our team prepares and gets coordinated and trains to be ready is so important, having all of your staff gold carded, I believe it was, that's a big deal. And so just want to put another shout out to that and just continue to prepare and get ready. And hopefully we get through this season without any major, major efforts. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. And Sheriff, I may just wrap up. You know, you've heard a lot from me all day, but I am definitely not the one doing this, right? This is, to echo your point, this is a definitely collaborative effort, you know, our partnerships that we have regionally mean more than words can say, you know, it's just evident by them being here. So we appreciate them, we rely on them. And while we can't tell the future, we know realistically that, you know, things could get a little tricky this summer, but working with them, we're, we are prepared to respond should the need should arise. Thank you all.
Thank you. And you didn't tell us exactly the weather that's coming, but we hope it's a lot and good moisture for us. So you said there was good news, but we never heard it. So thanks.